But these people, this is politically timed to embarrass Andy Sponseller. And I think, you know, perhaps they feel maybe they can take Andy off the council at this critical juncture in the growth management process. And, you know, it's really funny how the media has really latched on to this issue. And they're making a big deal about it and it's in the paper and it's on the talk radio. But, you know, I remember when Barbara Evans cut her little sweetheart deal with Eagle Hardware. Thirty thousand dollars of taxpayer money was spent because of Barbara Evans so that Eagle Hardware could get a favorable and very beneficial zoning change. Not a peep about that on talk radio, not a paragraph about that in Missoulaian. Now, you know, what's more important, where Andy Sponseller is spending the night or Barbara Evans is misusing the taxpayers' money? You know, maybe the media ought to pay a little bit more attention to what really goes on in politics. Because while they're out there messing around trying to find out where Andy's sleeping, people like Barbara Evans is out there mishandling the public money on a daily basis. It's just amazing. Tomorrow at four o'clock down at, as Mayor Kevin White in Boston used to call it, down at Shitty Hall, they're going to have the big committee of the whole meeting and they're going to discuss Andy Sponseller's residency and just what they're going to do about it. If you care about good politics, if you care about good government, if you care about people who are working hard for community, the community interests and solving problems in our community, go down there and support Andy because he's going to need your support. We need to show these people that this type of politics, this mean spirited politics, has no place in Missoula, Montana. And we can start right now tomorrow down there at City Hall, four o'clock in the afternoon. Now that I've kind of done my little rant, we'll get on with our show this evening. We have a real good show planned for you tonight. It's all about living wage in Missoula, Montana. I have three wonderful guests. I have Anita Anderson with Montana People's Action. Anita is the chair of the board here in Missoula for Montana People's Action. Anita Maddox, who's a Montana People's Action member and a personal care attendant. And Derek Burney with Montana People's Action. Derek is the associate director. And perhaps Derek, you might just kind of tell us a little bit about Montana People's Action, the membership, how it works, and the history of Montana People's Action.
You bet. Well, Anita could probably, one of the Anitas could probably speak to this better than I. Montana People's Action's been around about 15 years and was born right here in the north side of Missoula with about 15 families gathered around a kitchen table, you know, trying to figure out how they could have an impact on some of the issues in their community.
And now you're a statewide organization?
Mm-hmm.
With how many members, Anita, do you have?
We're up to, what, around 7,000?
Close to that, yeah. 7,000 members now across the state. And I know you have big chapters, what, in Billings and in Butte?
Billings, we have a smaller chapter in Butte that's just been opened this past year, and Bozeman has a large chapter. We also have at-large members clear across the state. It's a great...
And you're, but you're not only advocates for low-income people, but you're also advocates for many other issues that revolve around the issues of, that face a lot of low-income people. Housing issues, work justice in the workplace.
Right.
And living wage being one of those issues.
Right.
And you also work with helping people organize?
We sure do. We've got, had a lot of successes in mobile home courts that's been a lot of the work and we've been instrumental in getting the laws, rules and regulations changed for mobile home courts. One of the first things that MPA took on, which was a little bit before my time, but they took on rate hikes with Montana Power.
Montana Power.
And were successful in getting those stopped. Looks like we've come full circle. We were talking about that at our last board meeting.
We'll be fighting that battle again probably real soon, but who knows who we're going to go and fight the battle with, you know?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Right now, there's a lot of issues in Montana and a lot of people are getting on board with MPA because we're in there fighting to do, make some changes. And we're working on a campaign for a fair economy. Basically, we've got four legs to a chair here that have to do with welfare reform and the people getting kicked off the welfare rolls. We've been instrumental in developing a welfare bill of rights and we've gotten that passed. Working very hard on living wages throughout the state. We're working very hard with healthcare. We're involved in the CHIP program, working with that. And then corporate welfare. We're also trying to make an impact there, so...
A small note on the CHIP program. It's the Children's Health Insurance Program, which is a new block grant program the federal government is giving money to the states to expand healthcare for kids that don't have it. And there's been a real controversy in a lot of the states where legislators are saying, you know, "We don't want to take the money."
Right, right.
It has, you know, some requirements or strings attached and just send it back.
So it's hate government people?
Exactly.
You know?
And so, a lot of those folks were really speaking up when this issue first started to surface a few months ago, but it looks like thanks to the work that a lot of our members have done around the state, putting pressure on their local legislators and the governor, that we're going to get that program set up, but...
Won't that program, if I'm not mistaken, isn't there something like 36,000 children in Montana that will be eligible or something? It's quite a large number.
It is. It's a really, really large number. And, you know, it's amazing as we get out and we're knocking on doors and talking to people about living wages, healthcare for the kids is actually one of the first things that they're talking about.
Yeah, well, it's got to be difficult.
So, but it just, you know, I thought about when you were talking about the tobacco companies. And that's, you know, a lot of the money that was supposed to go to that settlement was supposed to go to programs like the CHIP program to expand healthcare for people who've been affected by it. And there's just all kinds of fights going on.
Sure. Well, let's just talk about a couple of these legs to the chair a little bit. Welfare reform, you know, I guess there's a few states that are much further along than we are in terms of where they're at in providing training for folks who had been on welfare, who have actually gone forward and instituted a program. And where are we at in Montana in terms of all of that? I mean, we obviously have already told people that their benefits are going to end at a certain time. Have we actually gone and, as the legislature, actually put money out there to train people or to work toward finding jobs? Or are they kind of leaving that up to folks like Montana People's Action and other nonprofit or private groups to take it upon themselves to help find this employment and to run and carry the ball?
Well, a lot of the news is how great our economy's doing and there are jobs out there for people who are getting kicked off welfare. And in fact, people are leaving the welfare roles and they are finding jobs. Five thousand people that have left the welfare rolls, those 5,000 people are now holding down 12,000 of those wonderful jobs out there, and they're still not making it. Montana still has the fastest growing poverty rate.
So in other words, they're having to go out and get two jobs.
Exactly.
Or more.
Or more. And that's 5,000 in the state of Montana that are out there now on the program.
Exactly.
And, you know, this has a lot of carryover to how they, you know, in terms of their childcare and what they can afford for childcare. And Anita, you had talked earlier, you have a daughter, you know. Do you have children that are in childcare at all?
Yeah, I have two children, a six-year-old and an almost four-year-old. And they're both in childcare. And, see, basically what happens when I'm paying for childcare and I'm working at my job, I'm making a dollar an hour.
Right.
So I'm working two jobs, amounting to about 56 hours a week. So they're in childcare quite a bit.
And you're a professional and you're doing a professional job as a personal care attendant. And you're not making a living wage.
Yeah, that's actually why I originally approached Derek because I knew about MPA's programs and organizing some of that. And I approached him because I felt like it makes no sense. You have people who have to have special training, you know, CPR, things like that. And they're working in, they're, the clients that we work with would be in homes, would be in institutions if it wasn't for personal care attendants. They come in and allow them to live independently. The quality of the care they get amounts to the quality of their life, but yet they have a really high turnover because we start out at essentially after taxes about $5 an hour.
Really?
Which, you know, no one can live on that. And I don't know this for a fact, but I think it would be fairly easy to prove that 80% of the personal care attendants are probably supporting single-parent households.
Yeah.
And so these are people that are working 40-hour work weeks and still receiving benefits of some sort.
Yeah, yeah, wow. You know, in many ways, you know, we talk about a living wage, we're not necessarily even talking about a family supportive wage. The figure that's been thrown around is 7.50 an hour as a living wage and, you know, but when you talk about someone with a family, especially like yourself with two children that, you know, you have to put them in some childcare for some period of the day, 7.50 an hour doesn't amount to much. I know one of my employees has to hire a babysitter from time to time. And what I've tried to do is pay that person a couple of dollars more an hour whenever she has to have a babysitter to kind of make up part of that difference. Because she's important to me as an employee. I mean, I value her. And if it means she can't work, you know, I mean, it's worth it to pay her that couple of dollars more per hour just to have her there for those few hours a day, you know?
I often consider that, that if it's even making, if I should even bother working, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
I often think about that. If I should even bother working, I mean, the strain on me and the stress on the children and the way it affects them, like, I don't have time always in the evenings or the energy to sit down and read with my daughter. Where is that going to put her for literacy?
Sure.
I mean, the situation, like you were saying, people are saying, "Oh, our economy is so great, all these jobs have been created." Well, what are they? They're jobs that are retraining and they're, they're these jobs that were quote "entry-level jobs." Well, that's a fallacy. There are no longer entry-level jobs. Those jobs are the jobs that you're going to hold on to for a long time, yeah.
Well, someone told me the other day, I can't, it might have been Kelly Rosenleaf was telling me about a position they have over at Child Care Resources. And they had, you know, a lot of people apply and a lot of those people had master's degrees.
Yeah.
And this is a job that pays a living wage, but it isn't like it's a, you know, $35,000 a year job with lots of benefits. It's an hourly rate. And, you know, it'd be a good job. I think, I think she told me it was eight-something an hour. By Missoula standards, it's a pretty good job, but there's people with master's degrees out there running around, professional people. And, you know, I think the economy in Missoula and I think around our country is pretty tight.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, I don't know where, you know, there are new jobs being generated, but, you know, I would hate to be a person on welfare being told my benefits were up and I had to go out and find a job.
Right.
I think, you know, it'd be pretty darn tough in this economy because it is pretty, there's a lot of people vying for those jobs. There was some stuff going around from the folks over at the Center for Rocky Mountain West, they, that, that shows these new jobs that are, you know, even though they've created all these jobs, there's like been a 49% increase in jobs, but the wages haven't increased. In fact, they've actually declined in Missoula County. So, you know, it's kind of like, okay, there's these jobs, but they aren't paying any money. And they, and some of them in the service business or in, working in some of the retail, they said that when it was a mom-and-pop kind of store, they took better care of their employees, they paid them a little more money, they did this and that. Where these big chain stores coming in, you know, they pretty much have a rate and that's what you're going to get paid and, you know, that's the way you're treated.
Yeah.
And they don't pay as well as the mom-and-pops did.
Yeah, you know how they keep making that argument that raising the minimum wage is going to be so hard on smaller companies? And I've found when I've worked for smaller companies that I've been paid better. I've been paid above the minimum wage. It's when I'm working for a large corporation that they'll try and, you know, just pay you minimum wage.
Sure. So, what's the welfare reform? Let's, we'll skip by the living wage briefly and the healthcare that you're, that's part of the fair economy is with the child healthcare. And what would be MPA's role in that? Would you, would you be somehow administering that through your chapters or involved with the state in how that might get handled?
So far, our role has been talking to legislators and first getting them to accept the money. That was a big battle. And we've got people that are working on trying to implement the program. There's a pilot program out there that they were talking about. It has to be acted on by the 1999 legislature, so we're kind of in a limbo thing right now. We were trying to get them to go with Medicaid because it's already in place. We felt that more of the money would go to the children where it needed. That didn't work, but, you know, we were, we were able to get them to take the money.
Sure.
So, we do have a victory there.
Where have been, where have our local legislators been on this? I mean, are they behind you? Have they been right there or?
A lot of them have been kind of right down, right down the middle on this.
Really?
They've, you know, they've said that we want to get the CHIP program set up, but, you know, in order to do that, we have to please all sides, right? And so, Blue Cross Blue Shield, for example, one of the largest...
Corporations.
...in the state.
Yeah, I wonder how much money they spend on lobbying those legislators?
That's a good question, actually.
Lots more than we do.
Lot more than you do, sure.
I think number two or number three, Montana Power was the top spender on lobbying last session. But, you know, Blue Cross and Blue Shield really have a self-interest in getting the program set up in a way that would be contracted out to private contractors, you know, essentially Blue Cross, Blue Shield. And so, as Anita said, our, one of our main positions was that we need to set up the program and we need to set it up in a way that's going to be the most cost-effective way possible, which by all appearances looks like an expansion of the Medicaid program.
And cost-effective and also deliver the most good to the children.
Exactly.
Rather than some corporation or a private group taking their cut before it goes to the children.
Right.
Which is probably, you know, the way things get done with, when you deal with somebody like Blue Cross and Blue Shield.
So they weren't too happy about us out there pushing for a public program rather than a, rather than a private program. And I think some of our local legislators, who are generally, you know, good on these kinds of issues, were, again, kind of then turning to us and putting some heat on us saying, you know, "Because you're advocating such a radical position out there on the edge, you're going to endanger the, you know, the whole consensus here and crash it." So, but, you know, we don't, we don't feel that way. We feel like, you know, people really have a right to be out there expressing their viewpoints and pushing, pushing decision-makers in the right direction.
Well, you know, I would think that there would be a little bit more trust of, you know, people like Montana People's Action who tend, probably have the interest of the community or the communities they're operating in more at heart than, say, a private company, you know, who really has one interest at heart and that's what it'll do for them, basically, you know? And that's, but that's, you know, typical legislative response is, you know, gee, we're being pulled, tossed and pulled, you know, especially when the money interests are in there. And then the fourth leg, being corporate welfare, talk a little bit about that. I know, I've heard, Derek, you've talked about that a few times.
Well, you know, really, the corporate welfare part of our campaign ties into the living wage ordinances that we're working on, not only in Missoula, but also in Bozeman and Billings and talking to folks in other communities around the state. And basically, the idea is that if corporations are going to get support from the government, either at the state or the county, at city level, they ought to be accountable for what they, what they do with that support. And really, if you take a look at the contrast between corporations and the forms, for example, a form that Sun Mountain Sports would need to fill out for the city of Missoula to get support, it's pretty much just a one...
It's a one-pager.
One-pager. And as we did our research and looked through the reports that had been complete, the applications that had been completed for support in the city of Missoula, several of them had not even been fully completed.
Oh, no kidding.
And, but then you contrast that to the packet that family will have to go through in order to get assistance there.
Oh, God, yes.
It's an inch thick, right?
Yeah, yeah.
With all the proof and, yeah.
And so, it's not only the application process, but then the follow-up too.
Right.
So, if you're on family assistance, you've got to meet with some counselor at least once a month who's going to grill you on, "Have you been out looking for a job?" If you don't have a certain piece of paperwork with you this month and you're going to lose your benefits for the month.
That's right, that's right, yeah.
And nobody even follows up with the corporations that get, get their support.
You hear horror stories about people missing their appointment with their welfare representative because they're working and they get penalized because they were working, you know?
Yeah. And no one really knows what's going on with the subsidy that the corporation is getting.
Right.
And I think part of that, though, is because there's this mindset that it's really a state program. And, you know, I mean, it was enacted by the legislature as a means to give property tax relief, or at least the more common one, to give relief from personal property and things like that. And that there's this, you know, that there's this back of, there's this, all this body of law behind it to, you know, that this is the letter of the law that they will follow. And you're absolutely right, Derek. It's actually a pretty flimsy letter of the law. It's basically a one-sheet resolution and then beyond that, they just fill out a few, a one-page form.
Yep.
So this is what we want, how much money we want and what we're going to do with it and why we need it.
When we did, I'm sorry, when we did our research in Billings, we were trying to go back five or six years to see what, what had been given out. And we were told by the, by the county of Billings that they didn't even have records that went back beyond two years.
Oh, no kidding.
Didn't even keep records on it, so...
Wow.
And that's a program that gives out about $4.9 million a year.
Statewide or in Billings?
Just in Billings.
No kidding, that much?
The county of Billings. It's huge.
Really?
And no records more than two years old.
That's really amazing. You know, and I think in Missoula, in the four years I was on the council, we probably gave out maybe $35,000, $40,000 at the most. You know, I mean, very little money, actually. But obviously, Billings and the, and the people in Billings or the business people see it as a very good tool and have figured out how to use it.
Right.
To their advantage. That's amazing, so...
This is one of the things that gets me really fired up about the living wage thing because when people are saying, "Oh, we've got this great economy." Well, this is what it's built on. You know, it's built on the backs of people.
Yeah, working people.
That are making those $5 an hour and then having to go in and fill out all these welfare forms and the company they're working for is, "Oh, you know, we can't pay anymore."
The trade.
Of course, we're getting all this, but we can't pay you anymore.
We're getting subsidies, but we can't pay you a darn, you know, a darn red cent. Yeah. Well, it's very true. And, you know, I think that's where we have to step up and make, make some major changes, you know? And one of the changes that have been proposed is the living wage ordinance that has passed through not, in many communities around our country. Cities as large as Los Angeles and as small as, well, Derek, you probably...
Duluth.
No, some of them, Duluth. That's pretty small.
Duluth, Minnesota is kind of one of them.
Where they pass these living wage ordinances that would require any, anyone doing business with, with the city and getting some sort of contract would have to pay living wages. Can you talk about that for a bit, Derek? And what you found in your research, what, how other communities are...
Well, about 19 cities so, to date, have passed a living wage ordinance across the United States. And that's all just in the last two to three years. And there's a growing movement on this. Oakland was the most recent victory where they passed an ordinance that said businesses that receive city support have to pay $9.50 an hour as a livable wage.
Really?
Or they can pay $8 an hour if they provide healthcare benefits.
And that's, and that's for contracts over a certain amount?
Uh-huh. For contracts and for subsidies. So, you know, direct giveaways or tax breaks, they have to pay a living wage. And if they get large contracts from the city, and again, there's a threshold, right?
Right.
So, people who, you know, run a office supply store where the city buys paper clips, obviously, that's not going to be a big impact, but...
And did you find in your research that, that there were attempts to circumvent that by, you know, getting close to the threshold, maybe going out and doing, you know, like, say, a paving contract for $15,000 when the threshold's $20,000? And then giving out another $15,000 paving contract to a different company to circumvent that or?
You know, I suppose the dynamics are different in every city. I actually haven't seen a lot written about that in the efforts that people have done in different cities.
I'd be, I'd be real surprised if that was happening. I mean, the little research I did into living wage, I didn't see where there was any of that going on at all, nor did I see where suddenly there was this skyrocketing cost of taxpayers of doing business with these companies. So now, where are we at in Missoula in far as the living wage ordinance?
We had a rally at City Hall last...
That was last Monday.
Last Monday, which was quite fun.
You know, I arrived over there about quarter of seven and I think it was over.
Well, we were inside by then.
Oh, you, that's right, you were inside by then.
We had gone inside.
Yes, they told me everyone was inside.
And we did get the mayor to suspend the rules. He said that if there were enough people there that he might consider that. And when a hundred of us marched in...
Well, that was pretty big of them.
Humming our 16-hours song.
That's right. It's like, how many voices does Take Silly Hears, right? Too many people are underpaid.
We seemed to get his attention.
Yeah.
And we did give them a proposal that we want a living wage with, again, four prongs. And basically, we're asking for anyone who receives any sort of public assistance pays a living wage. We want low income to be a first source hiring, hiring pool of low-income people, people that are getting kicked off the welfare rolls. We would also like the requirement for a report from these companies that are getting wages. What are you doing with the money? How are you coming? Are you hiring the people you said you were going to hire? And some kind of consequences if they don't do what they're required to do. We get sanctioned if we miss an appointment for food stamps.
Yeah.
They should get sanctioned if they're not doing what they're supposed to do as well, so...
And what was, did, what kind of response have you been getting from city council people, you know, to the, to the four points that you're making, the...
We visited with several of them one-on-one and we've had mixed reviews, as you might, might think. Some people are very much in favor. Jimma Graff has been working on a living wage ordinance with, in his subcommittee and, of course, he's very much in favor of a living wage ordinance. We have some different opinions as to how that would look. And he's willing to look with, you know, at ours. And we asked to work with them to help develop this, so...
Well, you... Anita, actually, they invited us back for a meeting of the Economic Development Subcommittee, which Anita was at. You might say a little bit about what your impressions of that meeting were.
Actually, I felt like it was a pretty receptive audience.
Really?
Yeah, for the most part, it was a pretty receptive audience. They seemed to understand that, you know, that this is a problem, it exists. They seemed to understand the magnitude of it. They, it wasn't so much that they weren't open to the idea of a living wage, it was just what it would, what it would look like.
Yeah.
Who it would impact and how about, how you go about presenting it, yeah.
Well, I thought that Luanne Crowley's remark was pretty right on. She's, you know, she said that, "I believe that what we saw Monday night was really just the first wave in what is going to be a growing sense of desperation as people reach harder and harder times." People are starving, is what she said. So, you know, I think that, that many people in the council are taking this as a serious issue, so...
Well, you know, it's, there's no question the cost of living in Missoula has gone up. And, you know, it's often hard to go get some solid figures as to just how it has. I mean, we, we have that with housing. We've seen what's happened with housing.
Right.
You know, people can't, can't afford a home. For a while, rents were rising so rapidly when we had, you know, hardly any kind of a vacancy rate at all. Landlords could pretty much charge what they wanted to for rents.
Right.
That, that has lessened, you know, over the four years, last four or five years, you know, the city council has been really good about approving and encouraging a lot of affordable housing and that's helped out a great deal to now where I think the vacancy rate must be getting pretty close to 3%, 4%. And 3% or 4% vacancy kind of lets you have a little bit of time to go out there and find a decent apartment or maybe rents actually stabilize or come down. But housing's gone up and everything else has gone up. People's wages, you know, I still know some people who were making six and a quarter four, five, six years ago and are making about $6.90 an hour now, you know? They have not made any more than fifty cents an hour, you know, increases in the last couple of years.
Actually, that's pretty good, you know.
Really?
Six dollars an hour is a good wage in Missoula.
Yeah, well, I can remember.
Some of us are glad to get it.
I can remember back, I think it might have been when I was first running for, for city council back in ninety-three. The, the big issue was organizing the nursing homes and the personal care attendants and everything that was going on. And they were just talking about how low the wages were. You know, and back, it was like five dollars an hour, five and a quarter an hour. You know, it might even have been lower than that back then, and they were almost minimum wage jobs. And as, you know, Anita, you know, as we had said, being a professional and being paid that way, you know, is just disgraceful that that's the way you get paid.
Another point, too, is that it's a really high injury prone job, and, you know, you, you can't afford healthcare on that. You know, I think if you work full-time, they do provide healthcare. But if someone is disabled or hurt while they're doing that, you know, they're just, they're going to be on social security.
Yeah, yeah.
They're going to be a drain on that, on the, on the income.
So, are you kind of like a freelance person, though? I mean, do you have a set of clients that you go visit for the company you work for?
Yes, exactly, I go into people's homes, yeah.
And, yeah, and, but you might spend three hours one day with a person and then maybe one hour the next week with them.
No, no, it's set.
Is it, it's really, it's set?
There's set hours that you're in with people, yeah.
And how many hours a week do you work?
Doing PCA work, I work about thirty hours a week.
About thirty per week. And do you have, do you have, do another job on top of that?
Yeah, then I have another job.
Really?
That I work twenty-five hours a week at, yeah.
Wow.
And that's my good job.
That's the better paying job.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Wow.
Yeah, the majority of people that do PCA work, I think, do it for something other than money, you know, because you're not doing it for the money, you know. Yeah, because it's, it's, it's really nice to work with the people, and that's how they get you. You know, you get in there and you get attachments to your clients, and then you're there. But a lot of people then find, and this is so hard on the clients, because a lot of people then find that they, that they've established this relationship with the client, whatever, and they can't make money off of what they're, they can't do it on what they're making, so then they leave, and it's, it's very difficult.
It's really tough on everyone.
And then one of the hard things is that wage that we're actually paid is set by the state at their Medicaid reimbursement level.
Really?
So, the reason I'm involved in this campaign is because if Missoula, Billings, Bozeman start setting living wage, then I think we could look at asking the state to do the same.
Right, right.
Yeah, and.
That's a great idea. I don't know if anyone's tried that on a state level, have they?
It's been a very small effort. There was a bill in the last session proposed by Sue Bartlet, Senator out of Helena. And actually, there were quite a few people at the hearing to speak in favor of it. There were, I think there was only one opponent, but it didn't, you know, the committee kind of laughed it off.
Yeah.
And so, we've actually met with that senator to talk about how our local efforts statewide could help to build support for, for that legislation this year.
Well, you know, the, the difficulty, you know, and I find this as a small business owner, is you get bombarded by, you know, if you join, if you join an organization, Chamber of Commerce or the National Federation of Independent Business, you know, you get bombarded by their constant literature saying, you know, "There is another attempt to raise the minimum wage, we've got to go out there and fight it."
Yep.
Yeah, you know, and you, and you constantly get bombarded by that. And I think a lot of business people out there start buying into all the, they start using all the excuses. You know, "Well, if I raise you from five dollars an hour to six dollars an hour, what about the person making eight dollars?" You know, where's that distance between you and them? You know, so it used to be five dollars versus eight. Now, it's six versus eight, well, I'm going to have to raise them to nine. You know, and they use that as the excuse for being opposed to raising everybody's boat, lifting everyone's boat. And, you know, we've heard them all. "Oh, well, the teenagers, we won't be able to hire teenagers, what are we going to do?" You know, and they make it out like this is a big teenager thing. But most of the people that are making minimum wage or sub living wages are people like Anita.
Right, exactly.
They're people with families.
Right.
And they're a vast majority out there.
Right, that's like what she was saying about, you know, five thousand people have come off the rolls and they're working twelve thousand jobs.
So, it's just amazing. You know, to have to do the two jobs or three jobs, all of them, you know, paying so very little money to actually end up taking home maybe eight bucks or nine bucks.
And it's pretty typical of sort of our myopic view that we get that, okay, well, I'm only going to pay you five dollars and this is better for the whole economy. But you look at it and the, the larger cost of, you know, people leaving their ten, ten, twelve-year-olds at home alone.
Sure.
For myself, like, my own health is like rapidly deteriorated, working this hard.
Sure.
I've been into like Partnership Health Center like three times, you know, that's state, yeah, that's state sponsored.
You probably spend a great deal of your day just running around.
Yeah, exactly.
You know? I mean, I, I do that every year in April and May.
Right.
In June, you know, I feel like I'm just going like this in circles, but, you know, I, I can't complain. I mean, you know, I mean, but there's a lot of people that go out and do it, you know, and they do it three hundred and sixty-five days a year and are running the kids here and running, or to pick the kids up there and trying to get a meal in there and trying to get, you know, the kids off to wherever they have to go and then back home again, get the kids to bed and do whatever they're doing. And it's just really tough. It's really stressful on a family.
That bootstrap philosophy that, you know, you can pull yourself up by your bootstraps. And I'm literally like someone who kind of bought into that.
Yeah.
And so, I decided to give it a try, and, you know, it doesn't, it's not going to happen.
Yeah.
And I, I actually, I have a bachelor's degree and I'm going to go back to school in the hopes that maybe I'll actually make a higher wage.
Yeah.
But it, it doesn't work. You can work really hard, you can go to college and work really hard at being there, and you're still going to come out and find yourself, you know, trying, working fifty-six hours a week, trying to make it.
I think those who, who give the old pull yourself up by the boot strap and use them by, in some example, usually that example is just someone who fell ass backwards into something.
Right, exactly.
And just, "Oh, my God, I got this wonderful job." Well, they're, they're, they're not the norm.
Right, yeah.
You know, I mean, pulling yourself up by the bootstraps is very, very tough. And, you know, I think this, the last six years, I, I'll even go back further. I'd say since about nineteen eighty, since Ronald Reagan, there's been this all-out warfare on working class people, you know. And it starts right in Washington and it goes down to the state level. And let's hope, you know, on the local level, we can do something about it, maybe reverse that. Because, you know, I don't think we're ever going to, we're never, there's no hope for Washington. I mean, you know, they're totally bought in, both political parties are totally bought into the corporate greed and the money and, you know, the class war, and they're part of it, you know. They're, just like they're feeding the ammunition to the Iraqis, you know. And on the other hand, they're going wink, wink, you know, we're not, we're not involved, or they're feeding the ammunition to somebody else and keep these little conflicts going, you know, it's up. So maybe locally, we can do something and get this ordinance passed. And do you think, you know, if we get this through city council and the city enacts it, then we can maybe do the county and maybe the county schools?
That's what we're starting. This is the first step, and we are going to the state with it eventually. And we have, you know, if we can get it passed here and we can get one passed in Billings and one in Bozeman, then each little victory that we have is a step closer to getting a state.
How far along are you in those other communities to some sort of living wage ordinance being drawn up? Or, you, I assume you've identified some of the legislators in the city councils you could work with?
In Bozeman, actually, things look really good.
Yeah.
Bozeman was one of the few communities in Montana where during the last election cycle, a majority of progressives actually won their, won their races.
Really?
And so, there's a.
The development community hasn't gotten after them yet.
Apparently, they prioritize their spending in different, different places, so. But, so, we've got three progressives out of a five-member city commission there, all of whom have verbally stated to us their support for passing seven fifty livable wage ordinance there in Bozeman. So, we have agreement at kind of the base level there. And so now, the, the work that we're doing there is trying to bring more people into the dialogue, see, you know, do we want to talk about a livable wage or something higher than seven fifty? Because seven fifty frankly is below the poverty level for a family of three.
I know, that's amazing, huh? Yeah.
And.
It's such a high wage, though, you know.
I know, for Montana, it seems just.
And, and then also working with them to see if we can craft the ordinance in a way that covers some other issues as well. So, for example, the Hotel Employees and Restaurant Employees Union is really interested in seeing some language in the ordinance that says if, if you get city support, then you're not going to be openly hostile towards your employees if they try to form a union, for example. So, so, you know, we're trying to build that ordinance in a, in a way that is really strong and productive for people.
That would be really good. And how about my good friend Chuck Thuley over there in Billings?
You know, we haven't actually spoken with, with Chuck Thuley. He did, he, I had a personal conversation with him one time.
Did you?
Where he stepped up very close to my face and asked me if, if our members all across the state were as aggressive and conflict oriented as they were in Billings.
I think he probably did that, though, in good naturedly.
Oh, good naturedly, I'm sure it was all meant in, in good humor. But I told him that, well, you know, we don't really like to get into conflict, but we'd like to make clear to people that it'll be more expensive to ignore us than it will be to.
I would think, though, I would think, you know, the thing, though, is Chuck Thuley, the mayor of Billings, is, is one of the more enlightened Democrats over in Billings. You know, he wrote a letter, they were, they were talking about bringing in casino-type gambling into southern Vermont. And he wrote a letter to the new, local, the local newspaper in my hometown, which is kind of interesting, because someone said, "Hey, you ought to see this guy in Billings, mayor, wrote this letter," where he talked about the evils of, of the gambling and the electronic gambling, the stuff we have here in Montana and what it's done to his community. You know, and he spoke about how, you know, a lot of people who don't have the money are feeding the machines. He said, you know, he said, "When we, when we first had, gambling first came in," he said, "There was probably three pawn shops in all of Billings, and now there's like a hundred," you know. And he just went on and on, this whole litany of things that have happened since gaming came along and, and what it's done to his community, you know. And I thought, well, gee. You know, and he also, he got into the whole bit about wages and what people get paid, how they're reaping, you know, these restaurants that have the machines, the casinos are reaping a great deal of money, yet not paying anyone any money, you know. And I was quite, quite impressed by it. And I've met Chuck a few times at some Montana League meetings and some national meetings. And he always hung out with me and some of the other progressives, you know, it was kind of fun. You know, I, I think sometimes we shocked him, but, you know, I think he's a, I think, you know, I think he's someone you can work with over there.
He's a real, he's a community, he's one of those, he's a communitarian, I mean, if that's.
I think he's a fan of Dan Chemis.
That's right.
You know, I think he's one of those who worship at the altar of Dan Chemis, you know, which is cool. You know, I think it's good, because being a communitarian, there's something to be said for that.
That's right. He spoke, he was a keynote speaker at the MPA Annual Meeting there this last year.
What does one have to do to become a keynote speaker at an MPA meeting?
Well, in Missoula, he was, he was, Anita here, so. Are you interested in the job?
I've never been a keynote at anything, but, you know. I think that'd be kind of fun.
See what we can do with it.
You know? So, is there going to be something leading up to the, to the whole, you know, you're going to introduce an ordinance or have a council member introduce an ordinance, but do you plan on bringing in people from around the community? Some of the civic leaders and community leaders to kind of spend some time talking about living wages and wages in Missoula before this goes forward or at any point during it, or?
Yes, that's right. We've, we've actually been talking to a number of organizations that represent, you know, broad constituencies to bring all of those voices to the table and building the, you know, what we're calling the Missoula Coalition for Living Wage Jobs.
Great.
And the coalition members are, you know, we're building the four principles that Anita mentioned earlier. That's our foundation for building agreement among those coalition members that, you know, can we at least agree on these principles, if not all of the fine language? And then bring those people together and start talking about the details of how it looks.
So, what sort of people are making up the coalition?
So far, we've got about six or seven members, the Hotel Employees and Restaurant Employees, Local Union, the Missoula Indian Center is a member of the coalition, and the Carpenter's Union is a member of the coalition.
CMC.
CMC, the Coalition of Montana's Concerned Disabilities is taking it to their board. They're a democratic organization, they want to make sure it gets discussed internally. And there's actually a whole dozen or more organizations that are like that. They just need to get it on the agenda for their next meeting.
Is there a council of churches in Missoula or anything like that?
Yeah, there's the Missoula Ministerial Alliance, I think, which we still need to talk to. The Montana Association of Churches is a statewide organization that we've been working with on housing issues that we want to bring in on this. So, a lot of our work over this, over the last three weeks and over the next month or so is just bringing that group together, so.
I, I heard somewhere where something like the National Council of Churches is like one of the largest volunteer organizations and one of the best funded in the country. You know, I mean, they're the kind of people that get behind these types of issues. And here in Missoula, a lot of the, a lot of the church groups are very involved with Habitat and Pabarello and, you know, other, other good causes like that.
Right. And actually, the Catholic bishops have publicly stated a position in favor of living wage policies.
Oh, really?
So, that's another.
The National Council of Churches?
Yeah, I think so, so. So that's, they've been active in other communities in helping to pass this.
So, in these other communities where they've enacted living wages, did it just town go to hell in a handbasket?
I actually have a summary of some of the research that's been done. A lot of them, you know, they're so new that there's not a lot of detailed statistical research that's been done on them, but there was a pretty detailed report that was done on the Baltimore ordinance that showed a number of positive effects. Overall, wages went up across the board.
Throughout the community.
Throughout the community. So, not just the subsidized jobs, but the other jobs that are in the same job market, those wages went up. One of the big fears that a lot of the city leaders had was that the, the cost of the contracts would get bigger because, because labor would be a bigger slice of them. The cost of the contracts actually were shown to decrease after the ordinance because of a couple of factors. A, they believed that there was a lot of fat in the contracts beforehand, and this ordinance caused the council to look more closely at them. And then the turnover in terms of the employees also had a, had a big impact on that. Employees stayed longer, did better work, they completed the contracts in quicker time, and so the cost went down.
And now, but now is it Milwaukee that's extended it to their school boards, too? I think, is it Milwaukee or is it Madison?
I think it's Milwaukee.
I hate to say I get those two confused, because it would really.
Probably Radford.
Tell them it's Milwaukee, they'd be really upset if I compared them to Madison, but, you know. And, and I know one of them has extended it to, you know, to their school boards. And I talked to a council member from Minneapolis-St. Paul, and she, you know, they had just been defeated there at the polls, but, and they were about two months into revisiting the process. And since then, they've re, they passed unanimously, I believe, a new ordinance. But the original one failed at the polls, and they regrouped and they got community people together. Because everyone, I think collectively, everyone said, "Yeah, we'd like to pay people more money."
Right.
"But we're not sure how we do that." You know, they're all, everyone's kind of a little afraid. You know, they think, gee, if I start paying more money, I'll go out of business. Or if I start paying more money, maybe, you know, I won't have as much in my pocket at the end of the week, you know. And that's a fear, you know, so as a small business person, that can be a real fear. I think there is also the fears that a lot of these contracts would go elsewhere. People would just would not do business with the city anymore. And did, did you find out anything like that where, I mean, I, I got the impression from the stuff I read that, you know, contractors just sitting up and leave, Minneapolis or Baltimore. I mean, they were, they were there to do business.
Right. I haven't seen the numbers on the, on the Milwaukee or the Minneapolis one, but I know that a study done on the Los Angeles ordinance, for example, showed that there was no measurable increased hardship on small businesses in the city. It didn't increase the number of applicants for the contracts. So, a lot of those things that, you know, kind of that this is a job killer measure just didn't turn out to be.
Didn't turn out to be that way.
Businesses are actually going to increase, because if you're paying me a living wage, I can afford to participate in your business, I can be a patron.
You have more disposable income.
Exactly.
You know?
If I'm working at a, a restaurant and I can't afford to eat in the restaurant where I work, that's not a good thing.
No.
It was America's first great capitalist, Mr. Ford, that, you know, originally started doing this, paying, during the five-dollar day for his workers, right?
He knew. He had, someone had to buy his cars.
I think this is an inevitable thing, and people pretty much know that. I mean, wages do have to go up. And I think that, like, having a hundred people at the city council meeting the other night, I mean, there really are a lot of people out there that are very upset about it. So, people know that there's a wave, it's inevitable, it's going to happen. So, you know, here's the first call, okay, let's get together and do it.
Yeah, yeah, and I, and, you know, I, I don't know, you know, I, it comes down to where you, as a small business person, everybody thinks they're a small business person, and it's kind of hard to tell what is a small business and what isn't.
It is in Montana, right?
I mean, you know, is my business a small business? Is Rick's N.C. Print a small business? Is the Depot Restaurant a small business? Is, you know, Barnes &amp; Noble a small business? It's hard to say. I mean, you know, I think Barnes &amp; Noble probably isn't, but you could argue that a lot of our businesses in Missoula are small businesses.
They are.
A lot of them are still family-owned and family-operated. But it, it's just a leap of faith that you have to take. And, you know, my experience has been that I think we're one of the better-paying nurseries in my, you know, in landscaping companies, is that it all comes back. It just comes back, and, and the way the, the employees work and the way the, the customers relate to the employees and to the business and everything, it all just starts coming back again. And I know that people that, you know, get a little more money, like you, you say, Anita, they have money to go out to dinner, and they have money to do this, and they have money to do that, which is real important, it's real important for everyone, you know. And, and, you know, I, I'm getting by okay, too, you know. I'm not that filthy rich yet.
Right.
You know, and I may never be.
Right.
You know, it's like when Hightower was here, he said, you know, the Bible doesn't say, you know, that the love of money, or the love of money is the root of all evil. It was something like, well, it wasn't the love of money, well.
It wasn't money.
Money is, he didn't say money was the root of all evil, he said it's the love of money.
Right, right.
That's the root of all evil. So, you know, I mean, there's not a whole lot wrong with having money, but, you know, boy, when you get greedy about it, then it's a real problem. So, hopefully, we pass a living wage ordinance, and the city is a shining example. So hopefully, we pass a living wage ordinance, and the city is a shining example. Do you think that'll eventually get down to your profession?
Well, actually, if it passes at the city level, as soon as it goes to the state.
There'll be a time where we'll all have to have a personal carrot taken. I just, no, I'm only about 25 or 30 years away from that.
So you'd like them to be, you know, happy, pleasant, well-paid.
Well-paid and everything.
Not angry and vindictive, right?
That's right, not vindictive, you know?
If it, if it went at the state level, then that would affect my job. So, yeah, so that's why I'm doing it.
That would be great.
And you know, Anita's original idea when she first talked to me about this, and she thought it was this crazy idea to get all of the PCAs together, as well as the clients, and to use that power of numbers to lobby the legislatures to change the reimbursement fee. And she said, I, you know, I think it's, it's a crazy idea, but maybe we could do it. And I, you know, I said, well, actually, that's, I mean, that's what we do. That's, that's, so Anita's T-shirt says it all, right? It's organizing the numbers to really put pressure on the decision makers and take control.
We have the numbers and we can do it. And we've, actually, we've come to the end of the show. I want to thank all three of you for being on the show, Anita and Anita and Derek. And I think a lot of our viewers are very interested in living wage and what they can do to help. Is there a number they can call, real quick?
Sure, you bet. We're at 728-5297.
That's Montana People's Action here in Missoula.
And we have a website, it's www.mtpaction.org.
Can you give us the phone number one more time?
728-5297.
Great. On that note, I thank you for coming in and talking about living wages and what's going on in Missoula. This show is going to be rebroadcast Thursday at 11 o'clock in the morning on MCAT. So if you saw it and you liked it, tell your friends, maybe have them tune in and watch it. And we'll be back next week with another great show, More Progressive Voices. Thanks for viewing.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think it was a good show. Thursday morning at 11 o'clock. So if you like it so much this time that you want to see it again, tune in Thursday morning at 11 o'clock, and we have a good show for you. We're kind of wrapping up our spring season of shows. We've got one more show next week on affordable housing. We'll have Jim McGrath and maybe a, a local developer that's involved with making affordable housing possible, as well as someone that works with a nonprofit in our community who's been actively involved with making affordable housing possible for our citizens here in Missoula. As you know, I like to open every show with a bit of a rant or something, and I thought maybe I would attempt a, a joke this evening. I, I've told this one to Parker, our cameraman, on more than one occasion, and he kind of chuckles at it. An elderly couple were sitting around one time, and they were kind of talking about how their life had been so wonderful together, and they wish it could go on forever. And they made a little pact that whichever one died first, passed on first, would come back at some point and tell the other one just exactly what it was like after death. And about six months down the road, you know, the old man passes away, as often happens, and his wife is left alone. And oh, about six months after he passes away, she's awakened in the night by a voice, and it's her husband speaking to her, saying, honey, honey, wake up, wake up. And she goes, oh my God, you've come back to, you've come back to tell me what it's like. And he goes, well, you know, I get up in the morning and I have a big salad. And then when I get a little hungry around lunchtime, I have another big salad, usually a big salad before I go to bed at night. She goes, oh gosh, it's so wonderful that you're eating well in heaven. He goes, heaven? I came back as a rabbit in Iowa. So that's, that's our joke for Tuesday the 19th. You know, I think Western society is, is definitely declining, and I'll tell you how I know that. On the way over here, I stopped at McDonald's, and, you know, I, I thought, well, I'll go in there and have a grilled chicken sandwich. I mean, it's about the healthiest thing they have on their entire menu. So I asked them for a grilled chicken sandwich. I said, I don't want any tomato on it, because the tomatoes they serve at McDonald's, you know, are like leather. And usually, I don't get the lettuce on their, on their grilled chicken sandwich, because they put these little tiny chunks of lettuce on there, about the size of a quarter. And when you pick the sandwich up, it all falls all over your lap. So I told the woman, you know, at the drive-thru what I wanted, went up, paid for it, and she said, well, you're gonna have to pull ahead, because obviously, they didn't have the special, special-made grilled chicken sandwich ready. So I pulled ahead and I waited about five minutes, and young woman brings out the bag and says, thank you, sir. And I drive away and I open the bag, and there's the grilled chicken sandwich with a tomato and all these little tiny pieces of lettuce. So now I'm thinking, you know, what's going on here when you can't drive into McDonald's and get it your way? Maybe I'm gonna have to start eating in better places. We have a great show tonight. We've got three candidates for the state legislature with us, and one is running for the state senate and two for the state legislature. And, you know, with all the various districts, house districts and senate districts, you're gonna, I'm gonna have to apologize, I really don't know what number district any of you run in, you know? And, and I don't know, maybe they've changed over the years, you know? It used to be fairly simple, but there, now there's like 68 or 100 or 200 of them out there. And I have no idea what district you're running for. So what I'll do is introduce each of you, and you can kind of tell me and our viewers what legislative district it is you're running in. Gail Gucci, you're running on a district that is over on the north side, west side of our community?
Yes, I'm running in House District 66, and actually, we're sitting in it. It's downtown.
Even downtown too.
And it's the Lower Rattlesnake and the north and west sides out to Reserve, but it never crosses the river.
And never crosses over the river. And it doesn't go up Grant Creek or anything?
No.
Okay. And Ron Erickson, I've known you for a long time, you're up Paddy Canyon. What legislative district are you running in? And kind of give us the geographic boundaries of that.
It's House District 64, and it runs from Paddy Canyon, including a lot of the South Hills, but particularly the Whittaker Drive side, so that Hillview Way is the western boundary. And then there's a lot of the flats in Missoula, area around Lewis and Clark School, the area around Washington School, the area around Russell School, out Charlotte. It's quite a wide district. In fact, it includes Dean Stone Mountain, and it includes Mount Sentinel, and there are even 10 houses in Miller Creek. So a wide district.
It's a large area to, to campaign in and a lot of hills.
Yeah, a lot of, I know that's true.
And Bryony Swan, you're running for the state senate, and what senate district is that?
It's Senate District 32, and my senate district encounter, includes House District 63 and 64, so 64 being Ron's district. So I've got half of, half of my district is made out of Ron's district. So the areas that we just talked about, Paddy Canyon, part of the South Hills, all the way on the flats up to North Avenue, which is three streets north of South Avenue. But it also includes House District 63, which goes from House District 64 all the way over to the river, to the Bitterroot River, includes the Miller Creek area.
Really?
So it's a huge district that covers quite a lot of geographical area and a lot of hills.
A lot of hills, yeah.
A lot of walking.
Yeah. It, you know, I, I saw Ron out campaigning the other night, and I know both you and Gail have been out quite a bit going door to door. In fact, Ron, you said you pretty much have hit your district once completely.
Yes, I've gotten to every house in the district once, and I'm starting through because people aren't always home. So I'm starting a second time through.
Well, you know, that, that's one thing I like about Montana politics. And, you know, hopefully, it's something that we'll always have about Montana politics, is this one-on-one relationship you can have as a candidate with the voters, because you can go door to door and you can meet people, you can introduce yourself, talk about the issues with them. And, but more and more, we're seeing big money come into these local campaigns. More and more, we're seeing people go out and spend a lot of money on campaign ads and not do the door-to-door work. But we'll get to that a little later, that whole part. You, all three of you are what I would call good progressive Democrats. I've known Ron for an awful long time. Ron, you, you have been a longtime Democrat supporter of good Democratic candidates. I know you've done a lot of fundraising for, for Democrats, always been there when, when the Democratic Party has called on you for support in one way or the other, and good candidates from Bill Yellowtail to Pat Williams and everyone else in between.
Right, Dorothy Bradley back there for a while.
Dorothy Bradley, yeah, yeah. Why did you decide now to throw your hat in the ring?
Actually, personally, I like work that's challenging and interesting. I like work that's useful, and I've been incredibly fortunate in my life to be able to teach at the university for these last, well, since 1965, 33 years. And I had work that was interesting, and politics that was useful. I worked on issues. Basically, I got real concerned quite recently about what's been happening in the legislature. There's been a legislature that has been gutting environmental laws, there's a legislature that's not funding schools, there's a legislature that doesn't seem to care for the people of Montana anymore. And I want to try to join that group. I hope that in time, we're able to go ahead and get a solid progressive Democratic, Democrat, Democrat majority in that body, and, and a Democratic governor, two years from now, Democratic governor.
That would be, you know, I've, I've lived here now 15 years, and I know, Ron, you've lived here longer than I have. And I would not say that the Democrats that have been governor up to now have been what I would call very progressive. They've been a little bit more middle-of-the-road, not, you know, not a whole lot different than Mark Roscoe. I don't know if Schwenden and Roscoe, there's a lot of difference between those two or any, any of those other people. I think that, that those are all good reasons to, to run for the legislature, and the fact that this, this legislative body we have now doesn't seem to care about the people of Montana very much. They, they seem to be more of a hate-government kind of group of people over there, with the exception of about 20 or 30 Democrats that are remaining over there who actually do care about funding education and care about making sure our environment, which is a, one of the most precious gifts we have here in Montana, is, is kept, you know, clean and isn't getting trashed, and they care about building communities and, and that type of thing. Gail, and I, I, you know, we were talking earlier, I think you and I first met at a Democratic Party Central Committee meeting. I'm sure it was, that's where we, we probably first met, and that was probably 10 years ago, or close to it.
Couldn't have been that long.
Well, it was, or close to it. I know it was before I ran for city council.
Right.
It was probably a few years before that, and that's been four or five years. Why, why are you running?
Well, for similar reasons that Ron is running. I, I just have found the last two sessions to be appalling. I really think that the, it's a punitive kind of legislature that we have. Not everybody, obviously, but what's coming out of the legislature. And, you know, bills such as the Environmental Self-Audit Bill or Energy Deregulation, some of those things that are not helping Montanans, they're certainly not for the good of the people, in my opinion. And certainly, I've talked to, you know, probably over a thousand people on doors, and I haven't had anybody disagree with me on those issues. I think it's really shameful, some of, some of the things coming out of the legislature. And I think it's really important for folks who have a progressive agenda and who have a progressive voice to stand up and be heard, even if we can't win the votes. I mean, even if we can't win the bills and maybe all we're doing is stopping, trying to stop bills. But I think we have a responsibility, living in this community where folks really care about these issues, to bring that information to, to our constituents, and at the very least, let them know what's going on over there. And I think it's a great community service and would be an honor to, to be a legislator. So I hope that we get more folks in who are good progressive Democrats, and I, I think we will, these elections. But I certainly don't know if we'll take back the House or the Senate. We're clearly outnumbered by huge numbers, and so.
It's a lot of work.
It's a lot of work, and I expect to be sort of in hostile territory over there.
I think, you know, just about every Democrat feels they're in hostile territory when they go over there. Bryony, you know, I've, you've been very issue-oriented. You're the founder of Women's.
Women's Voices for the Earth.
Women's Voices for the Earth, and you've been actively involved with, with that group as well as several others. What got you just riled up enough to want to run for the state senate and take, you're taking on in the primary, not really an incumbent, but someone who has been there before in the House?
Yes, yes, I'm taking on Vicky Caccarella, who's been in the House for almost 10 years now, I think, which is an incredibly long time for someone to be in office. One of the reasons that I decided to run, I mean, I, I share a lot of the same reasons that Ron and Gail do, but one of the other things that's really important to me is I've been working at the grassroots level outside of the system for years, because many people said, oh, well, the system is so corrupt, you're never gonna change it from the inside. But I, I'm frustrated because we work so hard at the grassroots level. We work with citizens, we find out what their issues are, what things they care about, and we try to change them using citizen power. And I'm really tired of seeing really, you know, unbelievably good work being done at the grassroots level and everything being undone in the legislature. And so I sort of feel now I have to put my feet in, in both areas. I, I want to continue to do the grassroots work, I want to continue keeping a close, in close touch with the citizens that I represent, and at the same time, go to the legislature. And as Gail says, at least, you know, put my finger in the dyke and try to prevent really bad bills from being passed. I think that, you know, Gail's correct, we may not be able to push through bills that we would like to support because of the fact that we're gonna be in a minority. But I think that we can at least speak out against those bills. The other thing, Craig, is that I grew up in Zimbabwe, which many people may not know where that is. It's in Southern Africa, it used to be called Rhodesia. And I grew up during a civil war. I knew what it was like to walk into a supermarket and not have very much on the shelf. I knew what it was like to be frisked when you walk into every single building because of a bomb scare, to worry about landmines, where we didn't have a democracy. Democracies are incredibly precious things, but that are very vulnerable to political change and winds. And I think that we are losing our democratic state or our democracy in this country, because the political system is being taken over by big corporate money. And it's time to take politics back to the people, and that's what I want to do.
You know, yeah, I, I agree with you, and I think, but the difficult thing is, is that you've got people on the right who say things like, well, they're just gonna take our rights away. I mean, you know, you've got people over there who, who are adamant property right advocates. And we've got them right here in our community, who, who think any of us who are progressive, who feel that we should be managing growth, want to take their rights away. And to me, the difficult, difficulty is, is the rights of the individual versus the good of the community, and where things fit in, and doing legislation that benefits the community and finds that balance with the rights that individuals have. And I get a sense over in Helena for the last four or five years, the rights of the individual have been put ahead of the community good or the good of the state, or the rights or the good of, of the corporate, corporate powers have been put ahead of the citizens. So having said that, what, what are some of these issues that, and some of the areas of people, you've talked to Gail, you know, on the doors. You say you've spoken, you know, to many, many people, and I'm sure Ron and Bryony have as well. You know, progressives are not that far out of the mainstream. You knock on doors and say to people, well, you know, I want to go over there and work to keep our rivers clean, keep our air clean, or do this or that. And they go, yeah, I agree with you. I want clean rivers, I want clean air. So what are some of the issues? So what, how do you, how do you see bringing about change?
Well, certainly, environmental issues are definitely a concern in this district, House District 66. We have a super fun cleanup site at White Pine Sash. People are very concerned about contaminated soils and water, so that's, that's an issue. But, you know, one thing we haven't really touched on too much is sort of like what I call the human service issues, welfare reform, all the human rights, the gutting of the Human Rights Commission.
There was something in the paper today that people, more, fewer people are on the welfare rolls, but poverty is increasing.
Right.
In Montana.
Right.
That's, gosh, who would have thought?
Well, and that's, okay, let's take that one, because that's a good topic. On, you know, on the north side of Missoula, which is in this district, somewhere around 40% of the folks who live there are at or below the poverty level. So it's an enormous number of folks. So that is obviously a concern to them. It's not that they talk to me about welfare reform, they talk to me about the fact that they don't have a livable, paying wage job. They don't have enough food on their table. They're having to go to the food bank much more often than they used to, rather than using it occasionally, they have to use it more to fill in the blanks. So the, you know, that kind of thing is, is what's really of concern over here. And the welfare reform that we have in Montana called FAME, Families Achieving Independence in Montana, I guess we're a couple of years into it. And yeah, there's a huge decrease in the number of cases. So the caseload's down, something, somewhere around 40%, but there isn't a corresponding 40% drop in poverty. So where are these people? And you say, go get a job. What job are they gonna get? Minimum wage jobs we have. So we've got a problem. All of these are interconnected. And so what happens when we clear people off of welfare is that they go to other service agencies. They show up at the food bank, they show up at the YWCA, they show up, they don't have transportation. So there, all these issues are interconnected, and if you pull the plug at one place, they're gonna show up in another spot.
Well, last week, one of our guests was telling us that, I think she said there was like 5,000 people that are off the welfare role, roles, and they are, they have taken 12,000 jobs.
They're working three and four jobs each.
Two and a half jobs each, you know, in order to make ends meet. And. And, you know, and you're, in your particular legislative district, that is, that's a, that's a big issue.
It's the poorest part of Missoula. I mean, I think the north side of Missoula is probably the poorest part that we have. And, you know, there's a question out there, what does success in welfare reform mean? Well, to the Roscoe administration, it means moving people off the doles. To the advocacy agencies who are working on this issue, it means moving people out of poverty.
Right.
They are not the same thing.
Well, you know, if, if Roscoe, in his administration, can get these people off the welfare rolls and make that look very good, oh, his stock goes up as potential vice presidential candidate and he becomes, you know, the poster boy for the Republican National Committee, you know, and it's already happening.
But Craig, I think it goes back to what you said earlier, you know, it is this rights of the community as a whole versus individual rights, and if we don't take care of folks or help take care of folks who need help, which is a compassionate and an empathetic stance to have, then we just leave, okay, everybody's on their own, everybody fends for themselves, we have a free for all.
So what kind of legislation do we pass? What do we introduce? When, when you three get over there, do you do a jobs bill? Do you introduce some kind of bill to, to provide more income for training people to, so that they get trained in meaningful work rather than low-end minimum wage type work? I mean, what?
One of the great, one of the great things that has happened recently is that the tech schools have become a part of the university system so that those two schools can be integrated and a, and a person from the tech school can move right into a college education as well.
I, I know a couple of people who've actually done that, and it's a very smooth transition and a very good one for them because they probably weren't ready to go directly into college. They needed to go to the tech school, get a G, their GDA and, and get some of that experience of being in a classroom for a while.
Yes, and clearly to start getting anything to happen on jobs, you need a well-trained, well-educated, literate population. We're losing that by cutting our K through 12 funding. This community has had a 15% rise in inflation, about a 0.5% total increase in the last five years in their budget. So we're losing teachers, we're losing administrators, we're losing programs, we need some funding K through 12, we need to go ahead and be able to help our college students more, whether those are the people in the tech schools or whether they're at the, at the universities. For example, it now simply costs more to go to the University of Montana than it costs to go to Dillon. And, you know, that's really not going to work because we shouldn't decide who goes to college in terms of how much money they have.
Right.
We've got to get to the place where everybody can get the education they deserve and can handle. And, for example, one of the things the university is wanting right now is increased tuition credit money, basically scholarship money, and we've just got to be able to find that sort of thing so that we don't lose equality of admission.
Well, I know, and, you know, when I was on the city council, we'd meet quarterly, I believe, with the university and, at one, one of our quarterly luncheons, you know, they had Dennison and all the other big shots in there and they, they had just all these architectural plans for all the new buildings they were going to build and $120 million of, of bonds and debt to, to build all this, and they mentioned how they, they hadn't reached their bonding limit, but they, you know, and on and on they went. And then Dennison said, but the bad news out of the legislature is we were only able to get $2 million for scholarships and for financial aid. And I'm, you know, and I'm balancing 120 million, you know, no problem, we can build all these buildings, 2 million for the actual purpose of this whole thing, which is helping kids get into school and get their education. You know, I, I just find that, that, I, I find that a hard, difficult thing to live with, knowing that that's, that's the way we're looking at funding our college education.
Well, I think also, Craig, one of the things is we, we're spending more and more money on corrections. I mean, that's where the state's priorities are, and I find that a completely and utterly absurd situation to, to not provide our young people with the very best education that they can have. I mean, the fundamental, most important thing for a stable and good society is, is a decent education, and yet we're, we're not willing to fund that and we're willing to fund corrections. And, I mean, in reality, if we keep on going this way, we will have to continue to fund corrections.
That's right. Well, they're doing that in Idaho.
Because that's where, yeah, because that's where our young people will end up.
Sure, they end up in jail.
If, if they don't have a decent education and they don't have a decent job at the end of it. And I think that the legislator needs to start making some really fundamental choices and changes in their position on the programs that they are going to fund and, and in terms of making it a priority, what are the legislative priorities going to be? Is it going to be corrections or is it going to be school funding? Are we going to take care of multinational corporations? And I think what's happening in Montana is reflecting what's happening at the national level. We're, we're making it easier and easier for multinational corporations to operate here and particularly companies that pay low wages so they don't give back to the community. Or are we going to fund the people of Montana and give them a good start to life? I mean, I think the Montana Power deregulation was a classic example of that. I mean, we provided Montana Power with an incredible windfall. I mean, since deregulation, their stock has gone up 70%.
Yeah, yeah, it's more than doubled.
It's gone up 70%. There was no reason why we should ever have deregulated Montana Power. We have the sixth lowest rates in the nation. We're going to see people's bills go up by about $200 a year and that, you know, a number of studies are pointing to that. And we're going to lose $7.5 million, at least $7.5 million in tax revenue. Half of that goes to education. I mean, what is the legislature thinking?
Yeah, yeah.
And, and you know, there's a real connection between what Gail and Bryony are talking about in terms of social services and on the other side, what we're spending on the prisons, because what the legislature did last time was to cut those programs that are preventive, the social service programs that are preventive to stop it when a kid is getting in trouble. You, you help them then rather than wait for them to get to prison.
But why do you suppose that is? I mean, is it, is it just something as crass as saying you're tough on crime wins elections? You know, is, is it just something as, as basic and vulgar as that, that they, they wanted, they, they're passing this type of legislation so they can go back and tell somebody in their House district, well, I, I, I spent the money for that prison because we know crime is just a terrible thing in this country, and that's, that, that gives them more mileage in going back and saying, I increased the amount of money for education by, you know, $300 per pupil.
I think it comes back to that early thing you talked about with community. Many of the people you're talking about there, generally Republicans in the legislature, aren't caring about community and the rhetoric they use has to do with government. There's too much government interference in our lives, I say.
Right, they hate government.
And what that interference is, is the possibility of helping a kid when he or she's in trouble.
Right, or, or the possibility of, of, because of the money funding education coming from the state, that the state may say, this is what the curriculum will be, and it won't include God and Jesus, perhaps, you know, and that doesn't go over.
But it might include sex ed.
It might include sex ed, or God knows what it may include, and that may be part of their fear as well. I, you know, I just don't see how long, though, you can go on that way, because, you know, at, at some point, you get to the point where you just might as well just take and divide the budget, you know, this many million for corrections, this many million to pay the administrative staff to look after the facilities and nothing for anything else. You know, I mean, I guess maybe they get down to some base mentality that the sole role of government is to provide police and fire protection and that's, but make sure the streets are paved and nothing more, and they carry that mentality over to the state level. Unfortunately, though, much of what we can do here locally hinges on what happens in the state legislature. And one example that, that is, that is a big one for us here where we're experiencing rapid growth is impact fees on development. That we're limited as to what we can apply an impact fee for based on our state legislature and their legislation. Another one would be in an area that Ron is dear to Ron is open space and the purchasing of open space. Some communities in other parts of the country can have a real estate transfer tax, which will allow, and every sale of a piece of property, a percentage of, 1% or whatever, goes into a fund so that land can be purchased when, at another time. But it takes an act of the state legislature. Can we kind of maybe speak a little bit about that? And Ron, you know, those are two areas that you're very familiar with.
One of the driving forces, you asked early why it is that I decided to run, one of the things that made me run is that I was, I've really been following the growth management process for the last five years, and I came to the place of seeing that, number one, you can't do any kind of regional planning, the legislature doesn't allow it, so that you have Rovale County and Missoula County, which clearly has some border problems and some ways that could be devised to go ahead and help the two, we can't even do that. You mentioned impact fees. One of my major things is schools. We started to talk about closing Roosevelt School while at the same time, we've got a couple of schools up in, school sites up in Miller Creek, and we can't charge the development any impact fees for building those schools.
For building those schools.
And so the rest of the community is going to have to pay. So we simply have to get some tools that local people can use so that we can get growth management to work.
Well, a big part of the fear, though, is I think legislators in the state level, you know, who talk the game that local, we should make these decisions locally, they don't want the federal government telling them as a state government how they should operate, yet they, they're more than willing to pass, you know, to, to tell us how to operate, you know.
I think we do need to give local municipalities much more leeway in the kinds of ways that they want to manage their growth or buy open space or, or any of those things, or, you know, a housing trust is another idea that we, we should and could have at the legislative level, and you could fund it similarly to what Ron was talking about with, you know, a transfer tack of, tax of property, you know, a dollar, whatever, but we need to give local cities that opportunity, so, I mean, we should look at that kind of legislation. I think it'd be a really important addition and certainly folks around here, city council folks and others are really interested in that. They, they would like to see a lot more opportunity for that because when the state power usurps the local, it makes very difficult, and it's obviously different what's going on in Missoula, Montana than what's going on in circle, Montana. So we have different problems we're looking at.
But, you know, and not really, though. You know, I know when I was on the city council, the lobbying arm for the city council is the Montana League of Cities and Towns, and there are a lot of issues that our league would carry to the state legislature for us. And one was this whole idea of a cabaret license for, for a restaurant, and, and so there would be a little bit more local control or an opportunity locally to make some decisions about where casinos might be, or, you know, whether a bar would be a casino or whether the bar would be a restaurant serving wine and beer. And, you know, it was, it was really tough. I remember when we met with the, our local legislative body, Democrats and Republicans alike said, boy, you know, we're pretty tight with the tavern owners, and they all were pretty tight with the tavern owners. They've all been there for quite a while, and they, they saw it as a jobs issue. Well, we saw it as a community issue because our constituents were saying to us, you know, we don't want that nice little restaurant down the street to get a liquor license and then become a casino. We like, we wouldn't mind if it got a liquor license and they just served their wine and their beer with their dinners. And, you know, we saw it as an issue and of local concern. And, you know, fortunately, there are other communities in the state that felt the same way, and I, I think a lot of legislators don't realize that the municipal government employs a lot of people and municipal leaders, city council members and county commissioners represent a lot of constituents, and when, you know, you go to the legislature as a city council person, you're not just speaking for the other 11 people on your city council in Missoula, you're speaking for a bunch of constituents, you know. So, do you think any of you would, would introduce a bill to broaden the impact fee? Was that, would that be something you would do in the senate to broaden that whole idea about impact fees so it could be applied to different areas?
Well, I think so, you know, it, it's something that I think that we should certainly look at, and I, I kind of want to get back to one of the other issues that you were talking about, this whole issue of tavern owners and gambling and so forth. And I, I always say, you know, we, you asked, you asked earlier about, well, why is it that Republicans or, or many of our legislators vote a certain way? I always just say, follow the money. Look at, look at where they're getting their funding in their campaigns, and you'll see how they decide on, on certain votes. And I think that that's one of the things that voters are really frustrated with. I mean, they've been frustrated with it at the federal level for a long time because, you know, all of these politicians are bought and sold by corporate money. And, you know, they get in, they get into office and they're in there a long time and they don't want campaign finance reform because they know what side their bread is about it.
Sure.
Even though the public overwhelmingly supports it. And I think it's something that we need to look at at the local level because we're really starting to see that same level of corruption in politics here. And, you know, I think that, that we need to look at the gambling industry, we need to look at these other industries and who they're funding at, at the legislature.
The, you know, the gambling industry is humongous. I mean, people have no idea, you know, they go into their favorite tavern and there's a bunch of machines, but I don't think they realize the incredible amount of revenue that gets reported and then the amount of revenue that may not get reported that gambling generates in our state. The city of Missoula gets about $2 million a year in gambling revenue. Bigger cities obviously get more. Have any of you made any, you know, you mentioned follow the money. Have any of you made any decisions about the kind of money you're going to accept in your campaigns?
Well, Bryony and I differ a little on this, so it's an interesting one to go ahead and talk about, for example.
Well, and I know where, where Ron and I differ a little bit on, on Gail, I, I decided in my campaign that I'm not taking any PAC money, and I know there are good PACs out there. I mean, the unions have decent PACs and there, there are PACs for particular interests, education and so forth, and, and I, I certainly support people being able to organize around issues that they can. I think, though, for me, the, in my particular race, that it becomes a gray line and a blurry line, and so I just wanted to make it simple and straightforward and say to voters, I'm not going to be taking any PAC money in my race. So there's no question about where my allegiance lies. I want to be able to represent people in my district regardless of what they do for a living and know that that's who I'm representing and that I won't get into the legislature and have some big corporate interest like Montana Power or somebody from the gambling industry saying, you know, you owe us, we, we helped you get elected. And so I feel very strongly about that. I'm certainly, as I said before, I, I think that it's, that unions should be able to organize, they should be able to participate in the political process. I think that Montana Education Association has a PAC, and I certainly support that kind of thing. I just have made a personal decision not to take any PAC money.
And Ron, you, you differ slightly.
I differ slightly. Bryony talked about some of the good unions that, that in fact are supporting me. I am taking $100 from the Montana Education Association and from the Montana Federation of Teachers and from the National Hotel and Restaurant Employees. And why do I do that? I just think that one of the most fundamental things in the country is for workers to be able to organize.
Right.
And one of the great things that has happened is that we've gotten public workers to organize. I was just on the doors last night and ran into somebody from the firefighters' union, and there were real needs that weren't being met, and the unions have found a way with, particularly with public associations now, to, to make them work. So, I'm such a strong union person that I can find PACs that I would accept. There are certainly PACs who, who might offer me money and I would say, no, I'm, I'm really not interested in furthering the cause of gambling in the state of Montana, for example. I, I think that it leads to some addictions and it leads to some problems and we, the lottery is a joke.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, we've done some strange things on gambling already.
It's only a joke until you hit that power ball for about 175 million, you know, went tomorrow night, right?
Right, well, maybe you will, but because I've never put a penny in there, so I'm not going to hit it.
I don't know if I could be that lucky. And the limit's 100 bucks for individual contributions. And Gail, are you taking PAC money from?
Yes, I've accepted PAC money from MEA, as has Ron, and also from the hotel restaurant employees. I guess there's not a lot more to say on that topic because they covered it pretty well.
Yeah.
Except to just say that I would think long and hard about what PACs I would take money from. I certainly wouldn't take them from just any PACs.
Right.
Unions is a different thing. I'm a pro-union candidate, I certainly would accept that kind of money. I have, obviously, and I welcome that kind of an endorsement. I, you know, it's great to have MEA backing my candidacy, so, but it's a, I'd be very, very particular about it. I certainly would not take money from numerous PACs that I can think of.
Well, you know, the thing about it is, though, you know, that the whole, the whole PAC thing is pretty insidious because, you know, you'll see it in city council races where the PAC itself might not give any money, but the people involved with the PAC will organize and raise money and do fundraisers, and you'll see this block of people, that might as well be a PAC, putting money into everyone's campaign, and they represent a very special interest. With the city council race back in November, there were candidates who were getting a lot of money from developers and pro-development business owners and real estate people, a lot of real estate people, a very special interest. You know, and then you look at other people running and, and you see this broad spectrum of, of people contributing to their campaign with no real, you know, real set special interest group there. So, you know... So, you know, I, I think it's kind of interesting and I'm not, not accusing you of this because I know you would never do it, Brian. But I know there are people out there who would very easily say, I'm not going to take any PAC money. But behind them, they've got all these people out there doing exactly what happened in our city council race. And if anything, I would suspect that would happen of opponents of you guys.
Well, in fact, Craig, what I did is I put out a challenge to my opponent and said that if any PAC or group of people decided to go out and fund some kind of independent media campaign that either supported me or, you know, did a bad job of my opponent, that I would publicly speak out against them and immediately ask them to stop. But I want to just go back to this PAC issue. You know, I think one of the things I've really learned is how challenging it is to be the sort of new kid on the block. To have never run for political office before and, and know how much the power structure that exists makes it very difficult for you to break into that situation. And I, I mean, the situation with the Montana Education Association is a classic example. The letter I got from MEA, which did not, the MEA did not endorse me, although they said in their letter, we really were, I think the words were impressed with, with, you know, your, where you stood on the issues. But they said, unfortunately for you, you're running against someone, an incumbent, basically was the word that they used, even though she really isn't an incumbent in the race. Unfortunately, essentially that we, you're running against someone who's been in office for a long time and has got a fairly good record on education. It's easier for us to go with a known entity. And I can certainly understand that. But, you know, one of the things that I would say is, and it's very difficult for someone else to break in, even though I would sure have an equally good record on education. I mean, I have a long history of education in my family and it's just, I'm the new kid on the block, so I'm the unknown entity. I don't have a voting record. So that's where it's tricky.
The thing too though that happens is regardless of how wonderful the organization is, whether it's the carpenters' union or MEA or whoever, after you've been in the legislature a while, it's pretty easy to get pretty chummy and pretty cozy. And the legislature passed term limits. But it's a term per each body of the legislature. So you can serve, what, two or three terms, 12 years or something in the, in the state house? And then flop over and run and serve.
Eight years and eight years.
Eight years and eight years is what it is. Have any of you thought about that or made any public statements saying, you know, if I'm elected, I will just serve two terms, period? Or I will, or anything like that?
What I've said is that I want to be able to serve two years, two terms because I want to be under a, under a Democratic governor in the second term. I'm 65 now. I don't have any higher ambitions to go ahead and be, be running forever. There's some tasks I'd like to get done. I'm pleased with term limits. I have no problems with, with, with the idea that we ought to have term limits and look forward to whenever mine is up.
It seems that, it seems to me though, you know, and there's some really good people out there that have been there a while. But it just seems to me that after a while, certain principles that when you first went there that were so strong, kind of start to go by the wayside. What becomes important is getting yourself back in there again.
Well, we've got a citizen legislature in this state and I think that's one of the great things that we have. Once you're on the federal level, there's something else. It's a profession. But here it's a citizen legislature, 90 days every two years. That possibility of anybody running, that possibility that we started out with, that in fact you meet everybody in your district. You've been at every single door. I love it because I get to go ahead and see everybody's view. This is what everybody sees.
I used to like going around to see their landscapes. You know, I'd walk around, I'd be checking out all their plants and think, wow, there is something you don't see too often in Missoula.
Oh, it's a good time of the year for that.
It is, everything's starting to bloom and come around, you know.
I think term limits are a great thing. And I think we really, you know, ideally, the best way to have term limits is to vote people out. There's just no question about that. That's the best way to have a term limit.
That's a standard, a standard answer though.
I know, but I'm, I'm not saying that I, that I want to, I don't have any desire to go and stay forever and I'm not going to. I have no plans to.
But it's so tough to, to vote out an incumbent, I think. I think it can be really difficult.
It can be, I agree. But so, I mean, I, I just want to say that I have no problem with that. I'm not planning to go and stay forever. I don't think it's a good idea. I think you need fresh ideas, you need fresh new people in there. I want to encourage especially younger women to come up behind me and to run. We still have a totally imbalanced legislature, 115 men, 35 women. We're not even close yet. So sure, I, I want to go and I'm excited to go, but I want other folks to come on us.
Don't wish for that too hard. You may get, you may get elected and then get beat by one of those younger women. That, that happened to me. You know, when I, when I got elected to the city council, I said, well, I want to, you know, serve a term or two and encourage other people and get more people involved in my ward. And lo and behold, out comes this woman and beats me, you know.
I've got a woman running against me in the fall.
I'm not talking till, till after I get in for a term or two. But I can't, couldn't imagine staying for a long time. I think it's not good politics. I don't think it's good for the, your constituents. I don't think it's good for, for the state. I think it's good to move on. But, you know, the term limit thing is going to really come to head in the, not this election cycle, but in the year 2000, when people are term limiting out. And we already have a very shaky mix of legislators. We have a third of Democrats, a third Republicans and a third on the far, far right. The fear is the far, far right is going to get a lot of those seats of term. Now, I think we're getting a lot more Democrats in. But that, that could happen. And so we need to be recruiting folks right now to run in 2000.
Well, you know, but one, one of the big problems, and as Democrats, you know, and you've all been exposed to this, is first of all, on the local level for local races, for city council races and mayor races are nonpartisan. And the other thing is, it just seems to me, and this has been one of my concerns with the local Democratic Party, is that there's a real strong emphasis on the legislature. And that's, that comes from the state Democratic Party, is to get, you know, majority 98, majority 99, whatever, you know, the year is, to get people elected to the legislature. And there isn't a strong enough emphasis on the local level, getting people involved locally for local races to, to get them used to the legislative process, getting involved through the city council, maybe serving on the council for a four-year term. Getting those people recruited to move on, maybe to run for these legislative seats. Because, you know, you're talking about a ward, a city council ward is only 8,000 people. It's way smaller than your legislative wards.
No.
They're pretty comparable.
Are they pretty comparable?
See, we've got 800 and some thousand in the state and there are 100 districts. See, Brian, he has a senate.
She's got two districts.
She's got two districts.
That's true, you would have two.
Both Gail and I are running in about the same size thing.
Of the same size.
They're different.
But, yeah, but I think what you're saying there, Craig, is really important that it's really, it's really important for people to get involved at the local level. I mean, if you look at how the far right has gained power, they have specifically gone after things like the school board.
Right.
And, and local political bodies. And they've done it at the grassroots level while, while most of us were asleep and didn't think that those things were important. So I think you're absolutely right. That's where we need to be doing it. And, and I really want to see more and more young people get involved in the process because I think many of them are disillusioned about it.
Well, how many more old people?
Even Doug Campbell.
There's a, there's a great thing, Ron, is that I think that, you know, I, I really admire you because you have done so much for this community. I mean, I can't think of almost anybody that has done as much for this community as you have. And you've been involved in so many different levels. And I think that you really bring tremendous experience and understanding of what Missoula is about to this race. And I, you know, so when I say bring young people, I just want to see young people involved. I want to see them caring about their communities and getting involved. And both Gail and I work on a, we started a young women's leadership project here in Missoula. And so we're getting young women involved right in middle school and high school to, to take leadership roles and to really care about their communities. And that's what I'd like to see happen more with, with young people.
You know, and they've now, even the chamber has started this, you know, youth leadership Missoula. There's a leadership Missoula that you typically think of with the adults involved with. But now they even have a youth leadership Missoula that's been going on now for probably four or five years, where they get these young folks from all the high schools. And they run them through a regular program and it's very civic oriented. I know as a, as a legislator, I've had to go and speak and share experiences with these young people, you know. So it's, it's good that, but there needs to be that type of party building and that, that, that type of grassroots on the local level that we can build this up and, and bring these young people up as candidates, get them involved with campaigns or what have you, you know. I mean, that's, that's the political end of it. The other part of it is just being more civic awareness. But that, to me, as a Democrat, is one of the things that I go, gosh, you know, we've got to be doing this. We, this is where we, where we need to be putting our energies. The legislative races are fine, but they're like every other year or so. And let's work real hard in those off-years on these local races and building local party politics and not putting, you know, just thinking about the legislature all the time.
Well, you know, the, the whole thing of voters being disenfranchised, I mean, what did we have turn out for the school board to help me? I think 17% we had turn out for the school board elections that were just.
They thought that was high.
They thought that was hugely high.
My precincts ran from nine to 31.
Okay.
Really?
But the average was 17%. So we have a tremendous voter apathy, even at the local level, not just at the legislative. I mean, we won't, we don't expect a huge voter turnout for these primaries either. But, you know, a couple of years ago, I helped coordinate a statewide project called the Montana Women's Vote Project. And that was precisely aimed to, to get women back to the polls after they left en masse after the 94 elections. And they did across the nation, not just in Montana. But in Montana, some 50,000 women didn't vote. It was an astounding number if you think about our population. So it's not just about young people. It's, it's about getting folks back into the process. We needed that to be a grassroots process. You need folks to be able to work on issues that matter to them, to their communities, to their children. And it empowers people when they can do that. When they can go to a school board and, and have an effect, when they can make, testify at the city council and actually know that their testimony had something to do with open space. It makes a huge difference, but you have to get people involved. And when we polled the women who didn't vote, they said, the reason they didn't vote, they gave lots of reasons. But one of the main reasons was they didn't know what the candidates were all about. They didn't have any idea if this candidate was pro-choice or pro-life. If this candidate was good on the environment or not good on the environment. If this candidate was, you know, whatever. So, and women simply said, if I don't know where the candidate stands, I won't be voting. I can't believe that's a lot different for young people or, or any other of the population.
I don't know. You certainly don't find out much about the candidates from the, the little five or six paragraphs or, you know, whatever the little articles are in the Missoulaian. I mean, they, they write these fluff pieces where they're more concerned about what organization you are a member of than they are about where you are on an issue or where you may differ from someone on an issue. You know, and it's very nice and cozy for them to just sit there and write the, the little piece about so-and-so is a member of this organization and they believe in this. And, and spend their time around those issues and not really getting down and saying, okay, you know, you're going to go over there. How are you going to affect change? What will you bring, what will you do that's different than what's being done now? And I guess that's what I'd like to ask, you know, because we probably have 15, 20 minutes left in the show. For the last little bit of this, let's just talk about how you're going to bring about change. You've got your work cut out for you. I mean, even if we elect 10 or 15 more Democrats around the state, we still would be in a minority over there. The chances of us electing 10 or 15 around the state are pretty slim. So what, how will you be effective? What will you bring about for change? You know, what are, what are like one or two real critical issues that you could go over there and, and think you could, you know, work and build a coalition to get, get some legislation passed? I don't care which one of you wants to start that. Ryan, you want to?
No, why don't just one of these guys go ahead? I feel like I've done a lot of talking.
There was a time in this state where, I remember I was with the university for many years, from 65 on. I happened to be the president of our union and the chief negotiator for our union. And there were times then that I spent a lot of time in Helena talking about educational funding. And there was a time in this state where Republicans were very concerned about education. If there's a place where we should all be able to work together, it's for the kids someplace, for education. So, you know, I guess that the, the hope is, is that we can actually all work together on that. Yes, education funding is important and we've got to go ahead and work on it. I'm quite sure the Democrats are going to be positive on that. And the Republicans simply have to go ahead and dig up in their memories back to the place where they are too. I think Gail mentioned that, you know, we've really got three legislatures. We've got the Democrats, we've got the moderate Republicans and we've got the far right. We're going to have to work with the moderate Republicans. And that's where the work has to get done. And that's where you have to sit down and say, yeah, let's talk about what this state actually needs. And we can try that.
But the far right is so good at dealing with the, just the, the, just the, you know, like, oh, whether we want to accept this money from the federal government for to enact, you know, some education program or, or to go off on something that's far removed from the real issue, which is educating kids, but gets down to some moralistic value that they have.
We can't do children's insurance, right? Because that's taking government money someplace, so.
Yeah. Or because it somehow interferes with their hate government view.
Well, I think.
But I don't think that's moderate Republicans.
No, I don't think it's moderate Republicans either. But I think it's the far right and they tie up enough of the legislative time with frivolous issues or some of these things that, that certainly aren't frivolous in their mind. But really, you know, that keeps the, the bulk of the majority from dealing with what really needs to be done.
Well, and there's a classic example of that, which is the money for welfare reform, which the, this legislature, our legislature is trying to, still trying to turn back the 44 million in federal dollars, which would be two-thirds of our program. We put this state into crisis with this particular program.
It put people into crisis.
It put people into crisis and kids and.
Lots of kids.
Put people on the street.
That's right.
And we already have.
Well, they're already on the street, Gail.
And, okay, more kids on the street. But we already, we already have, you know, the lowest median wage in the country. We have the, our state is the highest, has the highest increase of poverty level, up 16%. I mean, we, we are just having some really bad numbers here. So looking at it is so short sighted to say, well, we'll turn back the 44 million. And I don't think the legislature will do it, frankly, I don't. But I know that it's those folks on the far right and they are tying up time. And I think what we need to do, if we get there, is to really make much more public what's going on with this craziness. You know, maybe we can do a lot more with the media, maybe we can broadcast. You can come over and do weekly programs or we could do KUFM, whatever, because.
If we did weekly programs with Helena, I can tell you it'd be a damn lot better than the fluff they serve up on KUFC.
Do Nut of the Week or something.
Have the legislature on TV.
Nutty legislature of the week.
Because then you'd hear what some of these crazy folks are saying.
Yeah, we could go down to windbags and drag a few of them out.
It's a great idea. So, I mean, that, that's a classic. But I wanted to go back to education for just a second, what Ron said, because what, you know, Missoula's schools are in crisis, we know that. But soon, many other schools across the state are going to be in crisis. Same thing's happening in the buildings, Great Falls, all over. Now, that's not been the case in the last session or two, but now they are coming to the same crisis. So I really do think that we will get a lot more folks getting on the fun education bandwagon because their towns, their counties will be having the same problems that have been localized to Missoula and now are spreading all over the state. So that is an opportunity to build, I think, coalitions and to actually get some folks on the bandwagon. But I don't think that that far-right fringe will get on there. It'll be, it'll be those Republicans and the Democrats.
But now, let's just switch gears real quickly, like into the environment. The far-right did get on board with the moderates, or the moderates got on board with the far-right to scuttle a lot of the, of the mining laws and the clean water laws. And, I mean, can we get those moderates, can we pull them back, Brian, and get them to, to come back and reverse some of that legislative action that, that they passed the last session? That, that weakens a lot of our environmental laws?
I, I'm not sure if we'll get the moderate. I mean, perhaps we'll get some. I think the environment is a little bit of a different issue from education because it's a much more loaded term. And I, you know, in getting to the education issue, I agree and I, and I want to take my grassroots experience and, and work with communities where those key Republican votes are, to make sure that the folks in the community are talking to those Republican legislators so that they vote the right way. But as far as education, I mean, the environment's concerned, it's a much trickier issue. Because unfortunately, we've been victims to incredible corporate rhetoric. It's always jobs versus the environment. It is not jobs versus the environment. We cannot live and have a healthy state with one or the other. I mean, we, we cannot have a healthy economy without a healthy environment and we need jobs. I mean, that's the reality. We, we all live in communities, we all need to make a living. And I have never seen it as an either or situation. And we continually be, we are continually put in a situation where you're going to have to pick. And, you know, I, I've done, been an environmental activist on many different levels for a very long time. And I have worked with, a lot with the folks at Stone Container to show them that there are ways to produce pulp and paper without ruining the environment and creating ways where their jobs would be healthier. I think that we need to, you know, look at these, I mean, because a lot of the times the, the resource extraction jobs, and for instance, you know, Stone Container is one of the largest and pays some of the highest wages in this community. We have to find a way to come to terms with making, sort of making friends with the mill and learning how and teaching one another about how we can have those high-paying jobs and protect the environment at the same time. But I think that a lot of it's going to have to come back to the people, to the people of Montana to bring this back. We saw that with I Want 22 Initiative.
We saw that with I-122 Initiative. I mean, that got outspent by the mining companies, and fortunately, the public passed Initiative I-125 that said, we don't want corporate money in these initiative campaigns. And so now we have an opportunity to go back and do the same kind of initiative and give it back to the people and let the people's voices be heard.
You know, we... We're out of time. I'm sitting here listening to Brianie, and, you know, that's the thing about these shows, they're an hour, but sometimes they go by real quick, and I'm getting the signal that we're out of time. The primaries, June 3rd, 2nd, and people better be aware that June 2nd is when you get to go vote. And in many of these races, the primary is the election. That, I believe, Gail, you don't have a Republican opponent?
I do.
You do have one?
I have a young Republican opponent.
Okay. Well, I guess I was wrong.
Brianie doesn't.
But Brianie doesn't. So, June 2nd, you know, go and vote. Three good progressive candidates right here can make some good changes over in Helena. We need good changes in Helena, you know, and we get them elected, and then maybe in a couple more years, we'll get a good progressive governor, and I think there's a darn good chance we can elect a Democrat in the year 2000 and maybe get the legislature back and make this, you know, make some changes over there. And please go out and vote on the 2nd. Tune in next week. Affordable housing will be our issue. It'll be our final show of the season, and so maybe until the fall, and thank you for viewing. This has been A Progressive Voice. I'm Craig Sweet, your host.